Okay. Go away, mark left, 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 right, right, left, right, left, 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 right, right, left, right, left. Left turn, mark. What a dark walk. Freezing, color.
I pledge allegiance.
Go there, color. Right turn, mark. Go away, mark, left, 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 right, right, left, right, left.
Please be seated. And I was prepared to sing the National Anthem, but y'all weren't ready for that, so we skipped over that one. Not tonight. First, I would like to introduce to you Dr. Sagon Eubanks, the Chair of the Board of Education, to bring you welcoming remarks and introduce our distinguished guests tonight.
Good evening, Prince George's County. It is a great day in Prince George's County, and it is a great day for Prince George's County Public Schools. I can't tell you how excited I am to see the room full of sharp young men and women today. We told you to dress to impress, and you have done that indeed. So, you look great. The Board Awards is a time for us to recognize the achievement of our students and the adults who serve them so well. You know, the work of public education, to put it mildly, ain't easy. Just like we know for each of you who are parents today, the work of raising children is not an easy process. But we know together, when you as parents are committed, when the public education system supports families and communities, and when we give everything that a student needs to succeed in school, great things can happen. And that's what tonight's event is all about. Let me first start, again, I'm gonna recognize a few folks. First, my colleague and the CEO of Prince George's County Public Schools, Dr. Kevin Maxwell. You'll hear a little bit from Dr. Maxwell later, and you will meet each one of our fellow board members throughout the day. I'll just introduce them quickly. Patricia Eubanks, Regina Jacobs, Kay Alexander Wallace, Mary Roach, Denora Hernandez, and Carolyn Boston. I hear and several other of my colleagues would join us as we move ahead. I know that I saw County Councilmember Todd Turner is here this evening. Thank you so much for joining us. You know, this is our second annual. For years, the Board has recognized students through a Board Awards process. This is our second annual Academy Awards version of the Board Awards. How many of you young people, come on, raise your hands. Tell us, how many of you enjoyed the red carpet this evening? All right, all right. Did you get interviewed? Did everyone get interviewed appropriately by our roving reporter? This is a great day where we're gonna recognize just how wonderful you are. This year, nearly 650 nominations were received for our 13 award categories. Almost every single one of our 206 schools have participated fully in this process. Principals submitted nominations online and provided justification as to why their nomination received this award. I want to give special thanks to the Board's Parent and Community Advisory Council, who served as a judging panel, a very tough job of kind of making the decisions about these student awards. And I'm gonna name them all, and those of you who are here in the front, please stand up. Alexandra Briggs Blake, Barbara Spencer Dunn, Abraham Abenjua, Leila Riazzi, William Gatling, Becky Wideman, Nigel Gardner, Latisha Corey, Ernest Moore, Lori Morrow, Lydia Rivas, and Stephanie Jackson. Did I miss any of my... So, these folks, thank you, give 'em a hand. Not only do they serve as the parent voice, most of them are community leaders and leaders of PTAs, and they also do a lot of work kind of providing the Board with wise counsel about how we can better engage with parents. And then on the side, they take this tremendously hard task of being the judge for these awards. Similar to last year, our largest categories this year are the Student Excellence with 103 nominations and our Unsung Champion with 113 nominations. I want to let our schools know that the Board will provide a legacy plaque to each school with a Board Award winner, listing and displaying it in your schools. And I want to especially thank the Board staff and administration staff for their support for putting together this wonderful gala. We have some of our staff who are here, and you'll see them walking around and doing all the tremendous work. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'll say, young people, you know, just like the Academy Awards, just like the Grammys, right? You only get one. But each and every one of you today are winners. Being nominated by your schools, coming up here on stage, proves how tremendously successful each and every one of you are. So I hope that no matter whether you come away with the final plaque or not, that you will appreciate the tremendous achievements that you've had and that you'll remember this night for being very special. And at that, I will turn the floor over and we'll get the program started. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Right now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Loretta Tillery, representing the Prince George's County Executive, Rashern Baker.
If County Executive Baker were here today, he would say, "It's a great evening in Prince George's County." He would say this, "Evening is great because we've gathered here to honor the achievements of students, staff, and community." Great schools doing great things in Prince George's County is a major part of the vision of County Executive Baker. What we're here to witness tonight is the evidence of the great accomplishments of our schools and community. We are here to celebrate the greatness of all of our honorees. We are here to celebrate you. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tillery. It's my pleasure to bring to the stage now the CEO of the Prince George's County Public Schools, Dr. Kevin Maxwell.
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight? You should be great. It is, as you've just heard the first few speakers say, it's a great day, a great evening, a great night. It's a great time in Prince George's County. I am honored to be the CEO of the school district. I was honored to have the opportunity a couple of years to return to work in my home, the place that I've lived since I was seven years old, which was a very, very long time ago. But I love this county, and I love this school system. And when I had the opportunity to return, I took it with excitement and with forward-thinking, forward-looking thoughts about how we're gonna move ahead together. And in just a couple of years, we've seen our graduation rate grow by almost 5%. We've seen our kindergarten readiness data improve. Our students, more and more students being ready for kindergarten when they enter kindergarten. We've seen some great results from the first park assessments that we've given. Lots of work still to do, I acknowledge that, but we are on the right track. And tonight, looking out at all of you, it reminds all of us that regardless of everything, you know, that is here, there, or everywhere, there are fantastic things going on in every school across this school district. And I am thankful to the school board, to all of our principals, and teachers, and other staff members that are here tonight or labor every single day in our schools, to parents, grandparents, to our business partners that we have here. You are part of what makes this great. We can't do this by ourselves. Dr. Eubanks said, "This is tough work, being parents, it's tough work being teachers and principals, but it benefits our children." And as a parent, as a longtime educator, that is what we're all here to do, to labor for our children. Thank you for your contribution to that. Thank you for being here tonight to celebrate the successes of our school district, and I look forward to continuing that hard work in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. And I think at this point, we have a special presentation. So I'll invite Dr. Eubanks and Ms. Boston back to the stage.
All right, we're gonna start giving out the awards this evening, and there are a couple of special ones we want to give. We'll start with just one because one of our honorees is not here with us yet. But I'm gonna start with an award that we're going to present that gives me great joy and also a sense of sadness, that I come this evening to present in memoriam, the Honorary Rookie Teacher of the Year Award to Ms. Neshante Davis. Mr. Neshante Davis's family is here today. Would you please join me on the stage? So, look. Y'all, anybody come on 495? Y'all know this is traffic there. I want all of Ms. Davis's family to be here for this special award. I know all of you do too, so I was told some of them aren't here yet. We're gonna start with our other awards, and we're gonna come back when all of her family is here to share this special moment with us. You guys okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, with that, we will continue into our presentation of the 2016 Board Awards tonight. And so I'll say two things as we get started here. First, just how do we get to where we need to be on stage, right? For our young people and everyone coming up to receive an award, you'll come up those steps and then take center stage right here. As I announce the honorees, as I say your name initially, please come on up to the stage, and then we'll present our awards tonight and proceed through each category this evening. We're gonna kick off this evening with the Scholar of the Year Award. Here to present tonight's award is Board Member Regina Jacobs.
Good evening. I have the distinct pleasure of announcing the Scholar of the Year Award. And so many of you know that throughout the school year, we recognize graduating seniors across the county as Scholars of the Week. We put their profiles on the PGCPS website and highlight the achievements that they have as well as their extracurricular activities. We are consistently amazed by the outstanding achievements of these young scholars and know that they will continue on to do more successful things. This award honors the best and the brightest. And the Scholar of the Year nominees are...
And I'll say this as we go in. I love the uniqueness of many of the names that we have tonight, and I'm gonna apologize now if I mispronounce anything. When I mispronounce something, I'm gonna apologize now for that, but I'll do my best. I did practice before we got here this evening. First, Angela Chin from Charles H. Flowers High School. Angela has more than 400 service learning hours. She is also the recipient of the 2016 Coca-Cola Scholarship. Angela will attend the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Jade Tally from Gwynne Park High School. Come on up, if you're here. Jade is a Rotary Club Scholar nominee. She operates a cellphone and mobile device repair service and has three information technology certifications, Comteia A+ and two Microsoft Technology Associate certifications. And this fall, Jade will attend, guess, the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Marlon Cruz. Marlon is a student at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College. With a 4.38 GPA, Marlon has made the dean's list three times. She has more than 180 student service learning hours and volunteers at the Judy Hoyer Family Learning Center. She also received first place in a forensic medicine competition. And this fall, Marlon will attend the University of Maryland College Park. Vinaychandra Ratchakonda of Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Vinaychandra has interned at the Robotics Realization Lab at the University of Maryland. He is a National Merit semifinalist and National AP Scholar. He also was an Intel Talent Search semifinalist and has won numerous debate tournaments. This fall, Vinaychandra will attend the University of Pennsylvania. And the winner is...
Let's see, who is the winner? Let's give everybody a hand while I look for it. That's the drum roll, and the winner is Marlon Cruz.
Congratulations, guys. Here to present the Spirit of Service Award is Board Member Mary Kingston Roach.
Good evening. Our next set of nominees' most frequently asked question is, "What can I do to help others? Wouldn't we all like a student like that at home?" The Spirit of Service Award honors that student that is making a change in his or her classroom, school, and community through volunteerism. This award recognizes students who not only go the extra yard to help their fellow student and school family, but they encourage others through their actions. And these are exactly the kind of students that we at Prince George's County Public Schools wanna produce, that we are not just college and career-ready, but great citizens as well. So we're very proud to give these awards to this group of students. And the nominees are...
The Spirit of Service Award at the elementary school level, Ethan Downey, a fifth grader from Glen Arden Woods at Robert Goddard. Now, Ethan embodies a true love for his school, administrators, teachers, classmates, and schoolmates. He is one of the morning P.A. announcers, awesome, and cheerfully starts the school day with his bright smile that you can actually feel through his voice, apparently. Jordan Jackson is a Samuel P. Massey Academy fourth grader. As a Cheetah Champion, Jordan is a member of Massey's Recycling Committee and the Robotics Team. Jordan regularly feeds the homeless, assembles Thanksgiving baskets, Christmas gift bags, assists with quarterly food drives, and visits seniors of the Pineview Nursing Home. Kemmy Aboidin is a fifth grader at Perrywood Elementary School. Kemmy serves others as a Gold Student implementing county initiatives like Red Ribbon Week, Peace Week, and a poster contest for peace. Also, as a member of the National Elementary Honor Society, she was very active in the school's coat and jean drives. Yvonne Reyes Perez, a kindergartner from Beacon Heights Elementary School. Whether it's a school dance, international night, Men Make a Difference Day, Black History Night, Yvonne is always there in helping to decorate, to set up, to clean up, or do whatever else is needed. She is too cute. She was also involved in her school's Big Dig, where she came out on a Saturday in the rain to help build an outdoor classroom. And the winner is...
And the winner is Yvonne Reyes. Already taller than me, so I'm a little reluctant to bring them up, but...
And our Spirit of Service Middle School nominees are Giselle Bravo Martinez, a sixth grade tag student at Glen Ridge Elementary School. Giselle volunteers as a morning announcer at her school and serves as a volunteer intern for the Math and Reading Success After School Program. Jaisu Loyomi Dewodu, I hope, is from Turning Point Academy. He is a natural leader and shows integrity in all that he does. The honor roll and perfect attendance student is the Vice President of the Student Government Association. He loves reading, math, history, and technology, that's all the subjects, and wants to become a lawyer when he grows up. His dream is to attend Towson University. Trinity Lyons is a Kingsford Elementary sixth grader. Trinity is the Vice President of the Kingsford Student Government Association. She's currently helping organize the Pennies for Patients drive at her school. She's also a member of the National Honor Society, the Nidding Club, and the Art Club. And finally, we have Sophia Sikowski, a seventh grader from Judith P. Hoyer Montessori. Sophia has participated with several community cleanup projects to protect the environment. She has spoken before Montgomery County Government to place a ban on the commercial use of polystyrene foam, and due to her advocacy, that ban was successfully passed. And the winner is...
And the winner is Jaiseloma... And for the final category of nominees, we have our high school nominees.
Starting with Jawan Blocker, an 11th grader at Parkdale High School. A member of the Prince George's County Young Democrats. He serves as the school's youth political analyst, lobbyist for the Prince George's Regional Association of Student Government, and serves as the Legislative Chair on the Maryland Youth Advisory Council. Politician in the house. You see what's happening right here, right? Kristin Beauchamp is an Eleanor Roosevelt High School senior. Kristin has volunteered more than 250 hours in the Green Belt community. One of the most significant volunteer projects that Kristin has completed was raising $2,000 for a nonprofit organization, Adoptions Together. This project meant a lot to Kristin because she too was adopted and wanted to help children like her. Leah Moreno is a High Point High School senior. Leah is the captain of the Junior ROTC Cadet Corps. She regularly serves as the leader of student groups who host special events at her school, and she serves with quality, leading her team to excellence. Omar Green, a 12th grader at Potomac High School. Omar is a scholar athlete and a member of the National Honor Society, represented Potomac High School at a Maryland State Senatorial Committee meeting, where he testified about the need for upgrades for his school's stadium. As a result of his and others' efforts, the Maryland Senate approved a budget that granted that request. And the winner is...
And the winner is... Let's give a final round of applause for all our winners.
Congratulations. Here now to present the Student Leadership Award is Board Member Kay Alexander Wallace.
I'm the same height as Mary, so I don't have to adjust the mic. Good evening, everyone. I am here to present this Student Leadership Award, and as a school system, it is very imperative that we not only educate our students, but that we also shape them into great leaders. And whether it's in the classroom or on the playground, a true student leader sets a prime example for their fellow students while accomplishing their own personal goals and inspiring others to act as well. And the Student Leadership Award honors students who are committed to change and sought to be a part of the solution instead of part of the problem. And the student nominees?
The Student Leadership Award nominees at the elementary school level, Cassius Reed, a fifth grader at Glendale Elementary School. Cassius is an active member of the School Patrol, the student government organization, and is the founder and captain of the Green Team. Cheyenne Roundtree, a Beacon Heights Elementary School fourth grader. In the first 100 days, Ms. Roundtree led efforts to clean up the schoolyard and helped to design an experiment to see where the most trash was being accumulated. This spring, the school will use that data to plan where to add trash and recycling bins to the schoolyard to reduce littering. Alexander Saxton, a fifth grader at Tulip Grove Elementary. Alexander has served as SGA president and is currently SGA Vice President and a safety patrolman.
All right.
Congratulations, guys.
David Ubah is a fourth grader at Catherine T. Reed Elementary. David is seen as a leader among his peers and has exhibited outstanding classroom leadership skills. And the winner is?
Cassius Reed.
Congratulations, guys. Right over here for your picture. And now we move on to the Middle School Student Leadership Award. Grace Brigham, a seventh grader from Judith P. Hoyer Montessori. Grace has served as the SGA president and has held other leadership roles. She's always thinking of ways to make Hoyer a peaceful place, in fact. It is in part because of Grace's leadership in peer mediation that Judith P. Hoyer Montessori School has had zero school suspensions in the past four years. Katie Javier, Port Towns Elementary School's sixth grader. Katie has served as the SGA historian and is currently the SGA president. She serves as a fine role model for all students and will go far with her leadership qualities. Kelvin Ceballos is a sixth grader. Sixth grader from Rosa Parks Elementary School. Kevin is the president of the National Junior Beta Club, a nationally-known organization where the entire student body had to vote for this office. He ran an awesome campaign, free of negativity, and held strong to his platform. He is also a member of the Safety Patrol's Discovery Club, Drama Club, instrumental band, and a few more. Lenora Saucier is an eighth grader from Turning Point Academy. Lenora is the president of the Student Government Association and led her cabinet in the organization of various positive school-wide incentive programs such as school dances and other activities. She has helped the staff with multiple fundraisers as well as their canned food and winter coat drives. And the winner is?
Kelvin Ceballos.
Congratulations, everybody. Our high school nominees are Jennifer Rodriguez, Oxon Hill High School senior. Jennifer has served as SGA president of her school and organized the student program SAIL, Students Accessing Individualized Learning, which is designed to allow students to meet with and receive tutoring assistance from their instructors during lunch. Katia Miranda, a ninth grader from the International High School at Langley Park. In her first month at IHS, Katia was the first to receive the Critical Thinker of the Month Award. Also, she will be representing the school and Prince George's County Public Schools at Harvard University in April on a panel for the Latin American Education Forum Conference, where she will talk to others about her experience as an immigrant student in a U.S. education system. Perry Hayes, a senior at Northwestern High School. Perry is the team captain of the varsity softball team, president of Best Buddies, and the president of the Student Government Association. In addition, she started an environmental club at her school. Zaguela Kamagat, I think, a 12th grader from Suratsville High School. Zaguela's achievements include receiving the USA Presidential Award for Academic Excellence, the Congress of Future Science and Technology Leaders, and Ben Carson Scholar nominee from Johns Hopkins University. And the winner is?
Perry Hayes.
Thank you, ladies. Now here to present the Student Excellence Award is Board Member Denora Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. In recognizing our Students of Excellence in PGCPS, it is important to note that excellence is not just being the best, it is doing your best. We know that many of our students are doing their best, and that is why this category was most highly nominated by principals. The Student Excellence Award honors not only students who excel academically, but those who also look for opportunities to challenge themselves and take their learning to a higher level. The Student of Excellence nominees are...
At the elementary school level, Alicia Mayo from Daswell E. Brooks Elementary. A fifth grader, Alicia primarily earns all As, and when she does not, it is her goal the next quarter to get straight As. She also serves her school as a council member, bus patrol, and a morning newscaster. Ariel Taylor is a fourth grader from Deerfield Run Elementary. Ariel is a member of several after-school clubs, including the Drama Club and the Black History Club. During her spare time, Ariel enjoys writing her own novels. Asha Verma, a fifth grader at Glen Arden Woods at Robert Goddard. Asha is a consistent honor roll student and frequently participates in mathematics programs and competitions outside of the school and the district. She is currently a fifth grade student being instructed on sixth and seventh grade math levels. Brittany Cabiera. She's a fifth grader at Lamont Elementary School. Brittany came to the United States two years ago, and in that short time, her English proficiency skills have soared. Now in fifth grade, Brittany's scores on academic assessments in reading, math, and science place her in the advanced category. And the winner is?
Ariel Taylor.
Our middle school nominees are Dustin Navarosa, a Magnolia Elementary School sixth grader. Dustin received the distinguished honor for winning the PGCPS Science STEM Fair Project. Dustin is a member of the Science Bowl team and robotics team. Nationally, Dustin received the Johns Hopkins Award for High Honors in Mathematics, Verbal, and Special Ability. Kaitlin Kim, an eighth grader from Beltsville Academy. Kaitlin has a perfect 4.0 GPA. Kaitlin is bilingual, helps her community as part of the Forward Mentoring Group, and is a member of the school's SGA. Nana Safo-Mensa, a sixth grader from Kingsford Elementary School. This young man skipped first and fourth grades due to his academic achievement. He entered sixth grade as a nine-year-old. He is excelling at a ninth-grade math level in the sixth grade. And his skills extend to playing piano by ear. Reynard Blair, an eighth grader at Turning Point Academy. Reynard earned a 4.0 GPA in both sixth and seventh grades and is currently in the top percentile of his eighth-grade class. He is a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, which helps aid officials in disaster situations and takes an active role in community preparedness projects. He hopes to become a college professor when he grows up. And the winner is?
Nana Safo-Mensa.
And our high school nominees are Ashley Fernandez, a senior from High Point High School. Ashley has a cumulative GPA of 4.292. She is currently taking several AP courses, including AP Physics and AP Calculus BC. She has also taken AP World History, AP English Literature, AP Psychology, AP American Government, and AP Biology. Clara Jansen, a senior from Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Clara has maintained a 4.18 GPA over seven semesters with a combined score of 2140 on her most recent SAT. She is a member of her school's Model UN Club and co-editor of the school newspaper. Clara is also a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, Chinese Language Immersion Study Abroad Program in Shanghai, China, every summer since 2007, and the Cyber Patriot Cybersecurity Team. Taylor Green, a senior from Frederick Douglass High School. Taylor is a member of the first cohort of students in the IB Diploma Program at Frederick Douglass High School, where she scored above the global mean for the IB Math Studies exam in the spring of 2015. Taylor maintains a 4.15 cumulative GPA and is an active member of the National Honor Society, IB Ambassador's Program, and the FDHS Morning Club. And the winner is?
Clara Jansen.
Congratulations. And as soon as Dr. Eubanks is done with pictures, I'm going to invite him back to the stage. So, Dr. Eubanks, I think we're going to try this special presentation. Absolutely.
All right, friends and family, we are back again to give two very special awards this evening, and I'm going to ask all of my fellow board members to join me on stage for these presentations, and again, invite the family of Neshante Davis to please join me on stage. Thank you. Friends, Ms. Neshante Davis is a recent graduate of Bowie State University. She was in the middle of her very first year of teaching here at Prince George's County. Unfortunately, Ms. Davis and her beautiful daughter Chloe were tragically taken from her family and school community on February 2nd. Ms. Davis was an energetic and beloved second-grade teacher at Bradbury Heights Elementary School in Capitol Heights, Maryland. And I will never forget the amount of love and compassion that was shared in front of Bradbury Heights when we celebrated Ms. Davis's life and contributions in a candlelight vigil shortly after we lost her. Ms. Davis made a positive impact on each and every one of her students, and all of her students who started with her in August had increased their reading levels by at least two or more levels only halfway through the year. We honor each and every one of our new teachers and support and treasure what they do, and we give an extra special honor as the Honorary Rookie Teacher of the Year Award to the family of Ms. Neshante Davis.
I'm a little taller, so I got to... This next award is Honorary Community Partner Award. Dr. Charlene M. Dukes, can you please join us on the platform? In addition to honoring all of our board awards nominees tonight, we wanted to acknowledge and present an honorary award for community partnership to Dr. Charlene M. Dukes, president of Prince George's County, I'm sorry, Prince George's Community College. Dr. Dukes has been an exceptional partner with the Prince George's County school system. Under Dr. Dukes... Under Dr. Dukes's leadership, Prince George's Community College has contributed to the mission of the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College by providing, among other things, financial support, facility usage, and college faculty. With her above and beyond support of the academy, its first graduates received high school diplomas and associate degrees in May of 2015. In addition, with Dr. Dukes's guidance and support, opportunities to earn college credits at Prince George's Community College through our dual enrollment program have expanded for our students. It is an honor and pleasure to present to Dr. Charlene Dukes this Honorary Community Partner Award.
Okay, I'm short. There's my favorite NBC4 news anchor, I just want you to know that, Erin Gilchrist. I love you, every morning, every morning. So it's a pleasure to be here, this is such a surprise for me. I kept asking, so what do you want me to be there for and why is the time important? But it's to do the work that we do at Prince George's Community College really is all about raising excellence, academic achievement, and quite frankly, service to Prince George's County. And as I sat and listened and certainly applauded all of the young people who walked across this stage, I think that what we know is the work that Dr. Maxwell, the Board of Education, and teachers, employees in Prince George's County are doing the right thing. And I think that what we also know is that Prince George's County has a future because these young people are absolutely awesome. We're just happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
So we'll continue with our student awards tonight. The next category is the Student Artist Award, being presented by Board Member Loopy Grady.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here. Everyone's enjoying the evening, it seems like. So today I get to present the Student Artist Award. The world is their canvas, and each of the nominees has enriched their community with a special artist flair. The Student Artist Award recognizes students who show passion for learning in the classroom and a passion for the arts outside of the classroom. Through their art, through their love of art, music, dance, and drama, these students show just how enriching the arts to today's youth. Feel free, our Student Artist nominations, nominees are...
At the elementary school level, Grace Ballepo, a fifth grader from Beacon Heights Elementary. Not only has Grace received all As in the instrumental music program, she recently represented her school the Prince George's County Solo and Ensemble Festival. Kendall Martin, a fourth grader from Rosary Vale Elementary School. Kendall's artwork is currently on display at the mall at Prince George's for a countywide student art exhibit. Kendall embraces every challenge given to him in art class and goes above and beyond expectation. Noel Alvarez, a Cool Spring Elementary fourth grader. Noel is always enthusiastic, always enthusiastic to use new materials and techniques and provides artistic comments about his work and his assessments of the artwork of others. Noel enjoys mastering his craft. Riwalay Colonel, a fourth grader from Greenbelt Elementary. Her artwork was featured in the Greenbelt Library Art Show last year, and this year her self-portrait will be featured at the Prince George's County Youth Art Month Art Show. And the winner is?
Riwell Kimo. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Our middle school nominees are India Harsley, eighth grader from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. India is an active member of the music department at her school. She's a three-time member of the All County Honors Chorus and a three-time member of her school chorus. India has maintained honor roll status throughout her education. Kyla Hill, a Benjamin Floyd eighth grader. She is known for constantly working to improve her craft. Her artwork was featured on exhibit at National Harbor and the Walters Museum in Baltimore. Kyla received first place for the middle school art division last year at the county level art show. Lucrecia De Leon, a sixth grader from Langley Park Elementary. Known for using her lunch period to perfect her artistry, Lucrecia has created great works of art for display in her school. And Marcos Pastora, Cherokee Lane Elementary sixth grader. Marcos comes up with his own original artwork and looks at various artists for inspiration. Marcos repeatedly takes his time and adds lots of detail to his artwork. And the winner is?
The winner is India Harsley.
Congratulations, everybody. And our high school nominees. Carmen Leach, a senior from Potomac High School. Now, in drama class, Carmen performs in a variety of formats, including musicals, dramatic scenes, monologues, and improvised comedy. Carmen performs in the student band and is often called upon to sing solos at school events. She is also captain of her school's improv comedy club. Elias Fikadu is a twelfth grader from High Point High School. Elias has excelled in the fine arts program. His GPA is a 3.90 and his artwork is on display at the First Lady of Maryland Gallery. He aspires to become an architect or work in the field of engineering. Sally Fang is a senior at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Now, aside from her 4.14 GPA, Sally has been recognized for her musical and artistic talents. She's achieved Level 10 on music theory tests for the past 11 years. In addition to her musical ability, she served as graphic designer for many of her school's productions and was in the Youth Art Month 2015 Student Exhibit for PGCPS. And the winner is?
Carmen Leach.
Congratulations, guys. Here now to present the Come Back Kid Award is Board Member Patricia Eubanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here and I'm even more honored for the category I have, the Come Back Kid. I like that, because that's what I am. All right. Booker T. Washington once said, "Success is to be measured not so much by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles which he has overcome." The Come Back Kid Awards honors a student who is successful, has overcome numerous obstacles, and demonstrated a resilient attitude while doing so. Each of the nominees has so much to be proud of because they were persistent and decided to keep on pushing no matter the difficulties. And the Come Back Kid of the Year nominees are?
At the elementary level, Braxton Smith Bryant, a Matapanai Elementary third grader. Braxton began his educational career at Matapanai Elementary in the second grade after attending a private Montessori school. Initially, he experienced challenges adjusting to the structure of a comprehensive public school setting. Toward the end of the second grade, Braxton was identified as a child on the autism spectrum. He has now adjusted to the structure, follows directions, established healthy relationships with his peers, and is more cooperative with adults. Christopher Zamudio, a second grader from Rockledge Elementary. Christopher is an above-average student who is conscientious with his work habits. Family illness has been a large part of Christopher's life over the past few years, along with economic hardships, homelessness, and parental deportation. Yet, despite these obstacles, this seven-year-old student comes to school each day with a smile, and he is truly an inspiration to all. Kevin Augustine is a third grader at Thomas Stone Elementary. Kevin's reading level increased from at-risk to proficient. His SRI score grew from 96 to 516 from September to January. He consistently has a positive attitude in school and works hard every day. He started off struggling to follow norms and putting forth effort, but his growth mindset has allowed him to experience significant improvement in academics, social, and emotional performance. And Thalia Eusebio Sims is a fifth grader from Pointer Ridge Elementary. This year, Thalia has become more confident and positive. Her classmates consider her a leader. Known for her trustworthiness, if there is a dispute between students, she's often used as a witness and to assist in mediating a resolution. Even though school doesn't always come easy to her, she perseveres with a warm, caring attitude that shines a lot brighter. And the winner is?
Kevin Augustine.
Congratulations, guys. Come on this way. Our middle school nominees are Amari Fontanelle, a seventh grader from Drew Freeman Middle School. Amari came to Drew Freeman, to the Drew Freeman family in September of 2015. Prior to his transfer from DC, he experienced a traumatic encounter where he was shot by a neighbor and witnessed his mother being shot and killed in the same, by the same alleged person. Two weeks after this occurrence, he moved to live with his uncle, who is now raising Amari and his four-year-old sister. Since Amari's arrival, he's demonstrated strength, endurance, and perseverance through adversity and maturity. He is adamant not to allow this circumstance to be a detriment to his future. Aya Jabar, a sixth grader from Judith P. Hoyer Montessori School. Aya came from Judith P. Hoyer as a third grader, as a third grade student after being hospitalized and homeschooled because she was fighting a rare form of cancer. She used FaceTime and Skype to keep up with her classwork and never gave up. Aya comes to school daily, hard, even when she's not feeling her best. She is loved by everyone in her school community and beyond because of her positive, persistent, and resilient attitude. Nathalie Brito Taveras, a sixth grader from Carroll Highlands Elementary. Nathalie came from the Dominican Republic in March of 2013 and enrolled as a fourth grade student. Mastering English has not been easy, but she persevered. She has become one of our most verbally expressive students in both English and Spanish. Administrators, staff, and her peers admire her perseverance and diligence. Vi Thanh Ho is an eighth grader from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Vi and her family moved to the US from Vietnam three years ago. She came here knowing little English. That said, she never lets the difficulty of understanding the English language stop her from learning the content in her classes. In fact, she is a top performer in many of her classes despite the adverse situation of not being a native speaker. You know, honestly, over and over again, we have a stage full of winners.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
So, God bless all of our young people. Let's announce one name for this category.
Amari Montanelle.
All right, our high school Come Back Kid nominees are Ariel Correas Estrada, a Potomac High School freshman. Ariel went from being a student in eighth grade that was associated with low academic performance and behavior issues to a model student. At the start of his ninth grade school year, he made a commitment to himself to turn his life around. He began to set academic goals, and one of his goals was to achieve a 4.0 GPA. He reached that goal second quarter and continues throughout his high school career. However, he has consistently challenged himself with numerous honors and advanced placement courses. His grades have been consistently above average, accumulating in a 3.354 GPA. He's also participated in extracurricular activities, including the Student Government Association, the STEM Club, and serving as the baseball team manager. He's also participated in various activities outside of school to include the National Youth Leadership Forum on Medicine and the Maryland Youth Leadership Forum. Samaj Robin, a senior at Dr. Henry A. Wise High School. In 2005 and 2006, Samaj lost both of his parents. Samaj was known for being carefree, but completely turned his life around. Samaj involved himself with several activities at his high school, including being the flight commander in the ROTC program. He's also a member of the orchestra and a member of his school's male mentoring group. In the community, Samaj helps elderly church members maintain their yards, volunteers with the Toys for Tots program, and he volunteers at the DC Central Kitchen for Thanksgiving and Saturdays Cooking for the Homeless. And our award this evening goes to?
Forgive me on the pronunciation of this name. Olawatasi? Olawatasi. Olawadwasi.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congrats to all of you. To all of our comeback kids.
Olawadwasi Tomye.
There we go. We got it. All right, here to present the Scholar-Athlete Award is Board Member Kay Alexander Wallace.
Okay, I'm back. I'm sorry. I'm a little disorganized. That's how I am as a board member. So whether on the field or off the field, or these next set of middle and high school students understand the importance of giving your all in every aspect of their lives. They are disciplined and focused in their studies as well as in their respective individual or team sports. The Scholar-Athlete Award honors a student that exceeds academic standards while also demonstrating good sportsmanship and commitment to his or her sport of choice. And as a 4-year varsity baseball student, I'm honored to give this award to all of these students. So Erin, take it away.
Our middle school nominees are: Brianna McCoy, a 7th grader at Samuel P. Massey Academy. Brianna is an exemplary student athlete. Her sportsmanship and positive attitude are assets to the entire Samuel P. Massey Sports Program. She's an active member of Massey's basketball, softball, and soccer teams. In addition to being a stellar student and athlete, Brianna is also a valuable member of the Samuel P. Massey Academy Band and received a top award in the state competition. Danielle Ellerby, an 8th grader from Stephen Decatur Middle School. Danielle is a scholar-athlete playing both basketball and softball. She maintains an honor roll GPA while playing sports. She is also a mentor to 6th grade scholars and serves as a cadet in her school's leadership program. Danielle has a keen interest in the arts and sciences and plans on attending Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School in the fall. Danielle also has perfect attendance for this school year. Isaiah Frazier, an Accokee Academy 8th grader. Isaiah has excelled academically and in the area of sports. This young man is an outstanding basketball player as well as a leader in his school. Isaiah works extremely hard to maintain above-average grades and honor-level classes as well as high school-level courses. Isaiah has demonstrated his leadership abilities through sports and his affiliation with the Future Business Leaders of America Program. It's Dad. Dad. This is Dad. Okay.
I got a little nervous. This is middle school.
You know, kids grow mustaches earlier and earlier. The son's in Canada on a class trip. Right, okay. Leonard Meade, an 8th grader from Kettering Middle School. Leonard is currently a 4.0 student, consistently on the honor roll. He was inducted into the Cooperstown Youth Hall of Fame in 2015 and 2nd in pitch and run for the state of Maryland. With 6 years of experience, Leonard hopes to pursue a career in baseball. And the award goes to...
Leonard Meade.
Congratulations.
And next, our high school scholars, scholar-athletes.
Nathaniel Christian, a senior from Surrettsville High School. Nathaniel has been a part of Surrettsville High School Athletics Department competing in cross-country, track, and basketball while maintaining a more than a, maintaining a 3.3 GPA. Not only has Nathaniel worked hard in the classroom but on the court as well. His hard work has allowed him to push his teammates, show leadership, and vastly improve the overall performance of the boys' basketball team. Dami Oloyere, the, a senior from High Point High School who has received a full basketball scholarship to Coppin State University. Dami received the Washington Post All Met Honorable Mention for basketball this school year. She also plays volleyball and made the Washington Post All Met Honorable Mention in volleyball for the last 2 years. She was also listed as one of the top 20 basketball players-to-watch in Prince George's County. She's a member of the National Honors Society and has a cumulative GPA of 3.81. Roshan Pantin, an Eleanor Roosevelt 12th grader. For the past 3 years, Roshan has been an integral member of the boys' varsity soccer program. Early on, his coaches noticed his level of skill was not common for his age. For his efforts, he was recently recognized as a 2016 Washington-area Pigskin Boys Soccer Player of the Year. Tyler Tobias, a 12th grader from Potomac High School. Tyler excelled in the classroom, in the community, and on the field. Tyler has traveled to various colleges, showcases, and combines to participate against some of the best student athletes around the country. For the next 4 years, Tyler will attend the University of Albany on a full football scholarship. And the award goes to...
My apologies, not saying this right. Oluwado, Oluwada, Malola. Come say your name. 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 You're gonna say your name right. Oluwada Meala.
There you go. Good job. Congratulations, guys. So listen, I am a, I am an absolute awe of what we've heard tonight about these young people. Not surprised, but in awe because the list of accomplishments that we just went through for all these young people. I'm speechless. It's just absolutely amazing. Please, those are our student awardees tonight. Let's give them all a round of applause. Now, here to present the Alumnus of the Year Award is Board Member DeNora Hernandez.
Prince George's County Public Schools prepare our students to be productive citizens of the county, state, and country. We strive to equip them with the tools needed to be successful, not only in college or career, but also in life. The Alumnus of the Year Award honors an alumnus who has proven to be a productive citizen in his or her community and of Prince George's County. As an alumna of the Prince George's County Public School System, I am proud to present tonight's winner. She has taken her love for learning and education and has shared it with the Prince George's County community. The Alumnus of the Year Award winner is... Ashley Ryson.
Ashley Ryson was nominated by Drew Freeman Middle School. Ms. Ryson graduated from Largo High School in 2011. After high school, she attended Temple University, where she majored in hip-hop dance. Currently, Ms. Ryson is teaching dance and coaching the cheerleaders at Drew Freeman Middle School in addition to teaching at 2 other dance companies. All of this while training herself for the Redskins Cheerleaders. Congratulations. Now, here to present the Business of the Year Award is Vice Chair of the Board Carolyn Boston.
All these short people here. Our business and community partners serve a critical role in ensuring that each and every school has the support needed to provide a great education to our students. The Business Community Partner of the Year Award honors that person or organization that contributes time, support, and/or money to support a Prince George's County Public School. Their support not only meets our immediate need but has a lasting impact on the student, school, and community. This year's winner is a critical partner from one of our newest schools, the International High School at Largo. As well as numerous other programs in the advancement and training for our youth in Prince George's County schools. The Business Partner of the Year Award goes to... Chief Darrell Odom.
Chief Odom was nominated by the International High School at Largo. He's president of the Coalition for Public Safety Training in Schools Incorporated. From sponsoring students to attend a social justice conference in DC to designing lesson plans for students about public safety, Chief Odom and his team, including William Taylor, are committed to supporting PGCPs students and exposing them to careers in the area of public safety. Chief Odom designed interest surveys for high school students and created deliverable lessons for students to learn about the many careers and real-life skills needed in the fields, including police, fire, security, investigative, and technological fields. Congratulations, Chief Odom. Here to present the Rookie Teacher of the Year Award is Board Member Regina Jacobs.
Tall people. So how many of you remember those school jitters first day of school when you were a student? So I was gonna take a long pause because I know some of us said, "So long ago, Dr. Maxwell." You may not quite remember. But anyway, if you can imagine remembering your first day of school, think about what that means for a teacher on her or his first day. So, we understand those jitters. And this award is actually going to a new teacher within the county school system that has not only handled those jitters but has created learning environments for our students that makes them available and ready to learn. So we received some wonderful nominations for this award, and I'm proud to announce that the winner of the Rookie Teacher of the Year Award goes to... Okay, where's the drum roll? Zurgley Beagley. Come on down.
Sue, as she likes to be called, is a first-year teacher as well as a new teacher at Drew Freeman Middle School. As a new teacher, she's helped to support, develop, plan, and deliver the social studies literacy tasks at the FMS. As a result of her hard work, along with working with the school's literacy coach, the Drew Freeman Middle School Social Studies Team outperformed the district on 7th grade literacy tasks. Ms. Beagley also organized the school's first debate team. Congratulations. Now, here to present the Parent of the Year Award is Board Member Loopy Grady.
Sounds great. The Board of Education values the contributions of all our staff, faculty, and community partners. Some of the most valued partners we have in our school system are our parents and guardians. Each and every day, they are the ones who ensure that all the students come to school ready and are willing to learn. Our winners for the Parent Guarding of the Year Award are persons who have gone above and beyond to support not only his or her students but also their students from their schools. I am proud to announce that the winners of the Parent Guarding of the Year Award... We have 3. Katrina Weymer. Felicia Nemhard. And last but not least, Karen Parker.
Katrina Weymer, a Samuel P. Massey Academy parent. Although Ms. Weymer works a night shift, she enters the school building daily at 7:20 AM with the students. As a single parent, she encourages not only her daughter but all students to work hard and do their very best. She's a classroom mom, not just for her daughter's class but for classes with low parent participation. Despite her hectic schedule, she assists in the cafeteria and at recess on her days off. She lends a helping hand whenever needed and never fails to sacrifice her time for at-risk students. Felicia Nemhard, a Charles Carroll Middle School parent. Felicia has served as the school's PTO president for the past 3 years. She also serves as a member of a citizen engagement group for the city of New Carrollton. She has worked to secure funds for parents that are going through foreclosure and eviction as well as find housing for families. And Karen Parker, a Bowie High School parent. Karen is the school's PTSO president and has converted the focus of PTSO meetings to parent workshops. She utilizes multiple resources in order to provide parents, students, and staff with information related to scholarships, internships, and job opportunities. She has single-handedly changed the culture of the school's PTSO, which also increased in participation. Congratulations. Here to present the Unsung Champion Award is Board Member DeNora Hernandez.
This is my last one, I promise. Every school has an individual who works behind the scenes to ensure that the school runs efficiently and students are achieving at their highest level. At times, that person may not hold a formal leadership position within the school, but they are enthusiastically willing to perform whatever task necessary. The Unsung Champion Award honors a person who rarely receives recognition for his or her hard work. They are the glue that holds things together for the principal and the rest of the staff. Never looking for kudos, these honorees love what they do, and it shows. The winners of the Unsung Champions Awards are... Anita Booth. Bernadette Woodbury. And Darren Stevenson.
Anita Booth, nominated by Highland Park Elementary. Ms. Booth is a Level Literacy Intervention Specialist for Oak Crest Elementary, Highland Park, and District Heights Elementary. She partners with the school to lead and participate in PTA, family literacy nights, and other programs that support the best interests of the school and the residents in her neighborhood. Bernadette Woodbury, as the Special Education Coordinator at Kenmore Middle School, Ms. Woodbury tirelessly works for the benefit of her students. She advocates for her students and works hard to ensure that all decisions are made in their best interest. If a student needs anything, school supplies, a coat, a meal, or even assistance paying for a field trip, Ms. Woodbury has been known to find a way. Her students and the staff are her passion, and their success is her reward. Darren Stevenson is Croom High School's Behavior Intervention Specialist. Mr. Stevenson makes himself available to help with mentoring and supporting students. He also serves as coordinator of Croom High School's My Brother's Keeper Mentoring Group. Congratulations, everyone. Here now to present the Lifetime Achievement Award, Board Chair Dr. Eubanks.
Thank you. So, a couple of years ago, the Board of Education renewed its... the Board of Education renewed its mission, its vision, and its core values. Our mission to provide a great education that empowers all students and contributes to thriving communities. And that's really what the work is of our Winner of the Lifetime Achievement Award. This is a person who not only embodies the mission, vision, and values of Prince George's County Public Schools, but also lives by the mantra "Great by choice every day." In addition, the honoree throughout his career has gone above and beyond his position duties to strengthen and enhance the entire school community. Now, you know, we love our rookies, but there's nothing like that person who stuck with us for far so many years to contribute. So I'm proud to announce that the winner of the Lifetime Achievement Award is Mr. Charles Hamilton.
Mr. Charles E. Hamilton has served as the Building Supervisor of Melwood Elementary since 1967. He has remained dedicated to the overall grooming and upkeep of Melwood Elementary. As the patriarch of the school, he goes beyond the call of duty each and every day. If it snows during the school day, he removes the snow from each staff member's car. He made picnic tables in the cour... He made picnic tables in the courtyard of the school for students to enjoy. He created a chess table for students to learn and play chess. He does his job with a smile and has allowed his life to serve as a beacon of light in Melwood Elementary School. Mr. Charles E. Hamilton, congratulations, sir. A big congratulations to all of our Board winners this evening. Now, please join me in welcoming Mr. Owen Johnson, the Chair of the Board of the Excellence in Education Foundation, to present tonight's scholarship winners.
Thank you. Good evening. As stated, my name is Owen Johnson and the Chair of the Excellence in Education Foundation. First, I'd like to acknowledge the CEO, Dr. Maxwell, Board Members, and Board Chair for all your hard work. Tonight, I have with me colleague Steve Proctor, who had to leave for a previous engagement, who serves on the board of directors. Also with me tonight is Ms. Cheryl Landis, Strategic Business Partnership Specialist for Prince George's County Public Schools, who does the heavy lifting in this foundation. And also like to recognize Estelle Gardner, who also works tirelessly to support this effort. I'd also like to thank the parents, friends, business partners, school principals, administrators. I extend your greetings tonight for all that you do to support my county. I am a graduate of Frederick Douglass High School here in Prince George's County and retired from Prince George's County Public Schools and still live here in Prince George's County. It's a great place to live. And tonight just underscores the brilliance that exists among us daily. And that goes to all the hard work of your parents, community leaders, our Board Members. Thank you so much for all you do for my county. Beginning in the school year 2011, 2012 through the school year of 2014, 15, the Excellence in Education Foundation has awarded scholarships totaling $496,000 to 172 Prince George's County graduates. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that for the 2015-2016 school year, the Foundation is awarding scholarships totaling $151,000 to 41 deserving Prince George's County Public School graduates, all of whom have distinguished themselves for recognition. This brings the Foundation's overall total investment in Prince George's County to $646,000 since 2013. Tonight, five students will receive the CEO Scholarship, $5,000 each. Fifteen students will receive the Community Service Scholarship, $3,500 each. And fifteen students will receive the Leadership Scholarship, $3,500 each. Six students will receive the Technical, Trade, and Culinary Arts Scholarship, also of $3,500 each. At this time, I'd like for the Foundation Administrator, Cheryl Landis, to come forward. I forgot. I left a check somewhere. Oh, I think it's down there.
You can stand down.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, congratulations to all of the honorees, all of the students for your exemplary academic achievement. The Excellence in Education Foundation was actually established in 2010. And here we are, six years later. The Foundation has been awarded, as Mr. Johnson just said, $646,000 to graduating students in Prince George's County. I am tremendously proud of the work that we've done, and I hope that we continue to move forward. At this time, I would ask members of the Board of Education, Dr. Maxwell, and of course, Mr. Johnson, to come forward. What we're going to do is we're gonna bring all of the students forward. We'd like to do a photo op with the check for $150,000. So line up accordingly. To our graduating, our scholarship recipients, please note that your scholarship check will be mailed directly to your intended college or university. Tonight, we simply want to recognize and honor your exemplary achievement academically. As your name is called, please come forward. We have five students receiving the CEOs, the Chief Executive Officer Scholarship. Each student will receive a check for $5,000. Janelle Collier, Suratsville High School. She will be going to Ohio Wesleyan University. Nicole Hill, graduating from Flowers High School. She will be going to Pennsylvania State University. Anthony Thornton, graduating from Sutland High School. He will be attending George Mason University. Elizabeth Trolano, Eleanor Roosevelt High School. She has not yet decided on where she will attend. And finally, we have Vinachandra Raker Toronda from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, going to the University of Pennsylvania. Please come forward. We will now move on to the Community Service Scholarship. Each student will receive a check for $3,500. Alexis Braswell from Flowers High School. She will be going to Toson University. Ashley Braswell from Flowers High School, going to Howard University. Fatima Babaji from Flowers High School, going to Prince George's Community College. Chase Calondo from Frederick Douglass High School, will be going on to St. John's University. Kayla Copeland Livingston, Flowers High School, St. John's University. Ashante Corey Bay, Flowers High School, will be going to Frostburg State University. Victoria Howard, Suratsville High School, will be going to Bowie State University. Zachary Longdale from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, will be attending the University of Delaware. Savan Lanier, Forestville High School, will be attending Virginia State University. Zachary Mangan, Chelsea School, will be attending George Mason University. Zainab Nafu from Flowers High School, will be attending Bowie State University. Afu Nami Moraku from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, will be attending the University of Maryland in College Park. Julie Rapal from Largo High School, will be attending Prince George's Community College. Michelle Yuba, Deval High School, will be attending the University of Wisconsin in Madison. Cynthia Uba, Deval High School, is undecided. Please come forward. James Carter III, Gwyn Park High School, will be attending the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. Marlee Johnson, Oxen Hill High School, will be attending Johnson and Wells University. Asaretin Amafua, Largo High School, will be attending the University of Maryland in Baltimore. I do want to say that James Carter III and Marlee Johnson are recipients of the Culinary Arts Scholarship. They will each receive $3,500. Next, we have, and these are the Leadership Scholarship winners. Chamara Brooks, graduating from Parkdale High School. She will be attending American University. Jasmine Brunson from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T State University. Marvin Keith Chandera, a student graduating from the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College, will be attending the University of Maryland College Park. Armon Dorsey, Sutland High School, will be attending Darmouth College. Yasmin Eubanks, Sutland High School, will be attending Temple University. Lindell Goldson, Frederick Douglass High School, will be attending Savannah College of Arts and Design. Kevin Lazama, Northwestern High School, will be attending Pennsylvania State University. Brittany Agbana, Northwestern High School, will be attending the University of Virginia. Ananda Rankin from Oxen Hill High School, will be attending Pennsylvania State University. Angel Reyes, Bladensburg High School, will be attending Prince George's Community College. Cameron Robinson, Flowers High School, will be attending Morgan State University. Monica Walton, Eleanor Roosevelt High School, will be attending Elizabeth Town College. Hazel Ware from Flowers High School, will be attending the University of Maryland. Hazel was recently interviewed by Channel 9. She is a dual-enrollment graduate. She's also graduating with an associate's degree. DeJaya Wright, Gwyn Park High School, will be attending Indiana University at Bloomington. Darian Haley, will graduate from Largo High School, will be attending Towson University. Darian will be receiving the Technical Scholarship, $3,500, as well as Victoria Taylor, a graduate from Wise High School, will be attending Grambling State University. And our last two scholarship recipients will be receiving the Trade Scholarship for $3,500. They are Stephanie Duant from Bladensburg High School, will be attending Prince George's Community College, and Jasmine Ibarreta from Bladensburg High School, also going to Prince George's Community College. Congratulations to all of our scholarship winners.